Calling the order, the City Commission Meeting, regular City Commission Meeting, excuse me, February 19th, 2014. Will you all please join me in the flagstaff?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today, it was my honor to swear in four police officers and two reserve officers. May I ask our police chief, Jim Band, accompany me up the front? The sixth gentleman come forward. I can't say officer's name. Oh, five, my apologies. Very good. Before I do the swearing in, would you like to make some comments?
So, good evening. I'm gonna introduce our, the five officers that we have here. First is Nate Walbaum. He is a, yeah, why don't you turn around, Nate? Nate is a lateral officer that came to us from Canvey. Several years ago Nate worked in our juvenile diversion program up at the police department, so we've known Nate for a long time. He's here with his wife Jocelyn, right there, and a full crew here. Elijah, Savannah, Seela, and Noah are also in attendance. So, and then Spencer Road is, Spencer's a former reserve for us, who now, obviously, we're hiring as a full-time officer. His wife Lauren is here. Where's Lauren? Hi, Lauren. Spencer grew up in Lake Oswego, went to Lake Oswego High School. Chris Walco, right next to him, is a new officer with us as well. He and Spencer both just got out of the police academy together. And Chris's wife Aubrey is here, there she is. I thought if I mixed up the wives, that might be awkward. Chris went to Gladstone High School. And Commissioners of the three brand-new officers that threw our goals this last year, these are the last two. So, we've got them out of the academy now, so the three brand-new positions that we have, these are the last two of those officers, of these brand-new officers. And then, we also have, I guess I'll start with the tallest. Bo Peterson is a new reserve officer for us. These guys just got out of the reserve academy. Bo is a trainer at 24 Hour Fitness, grew up in Central Oregon, and currently lives in Damascus. And Aaron Jamison is here with his wife Samantha. And Molly is not gonna make an appearance for a couple months.
One month? But she is here.
And Aaron is an Oregon City kid, grew up, went to Oregon City High School. And he works for Orkin. So, Mayor?
Thank you. You get to face me now. I'm going to go ahead and read the oath and segments, and you repeat after me, except when I say, "Say your name," don't repeat me. The other thing is, I'm not gonna give these to you now because I found out that I signed, or you were supposed to sign on some of these. And I've been told I cannot swear myself in as a police officer. I, state your name? My name is? Boy, you guys are quiet. You guys making arrests and you sleep on that. Let's try that again. I?
I.
Your name? That's better. Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will hope, that I will uphold the law?
That I will hold the law.
And support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon?
And support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics?
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
And department's rules and regulations?
Department's rules and regulations.
And faithfully performing my duties as a reserve officer, in the case of a reserve officer, you two continue this. And while faithfully performing my duties as a reserve officer for Oregon City, Oregon?
While faithfully performing my duties as a reserve officer for Oregon City.
Very good. And the others are going to be, just another one. Performing my duties as a police officer for Oregon City, the State of Oregon. Very good, thank you. We also, we'll wait for people to clear for a moment. See if they got experience out there and some crowd control. We have coming before us the South End Concept Plan. And we've had a tremendous team of people that have been working on this, formal team. I guess I'll wait for another, some of those had to clear out or make room for others. So, hold on for a minute. If we need a bigger city hall.
Just a little intermission here.
So, I'm going to, I'm going to read off the names of those that participated, and then I'm going to come out front, and those that are here on this, on this South End Plan Community Advisory Team, present their certificates for them. But I'll read the whole list here. I hope I get the names right. Adam Zegel, Ellen Barker, Andrea Schmierbach, Bob Burns, Bob LaSalle, Bob Roth, Denise McGriff, Ginger Redlinger, Gwen Goss Dedrickson, Heather Ferguson, Hunter Teal, Marjorie Hughes, Norm Stewart, Paula Heimowitz, Rachel Thompson, Tom O'Brien, and Zeb, and I'm gonna say Yalick, is that right? Or Yalich?
Yaklich.
Yaklich. And those, I've got several of them are here, so I'd like, I'll step up here. Marjorie Hughes?
Here.
Yeah, bring, bring, everybody that's here, that's one of the members, come forward.
Thank you. So, I'd like to introduce some of the members of the Community Advisory Team for the South End Concept Plan process, which is a planning process that the city and county residents on this team have been working on for the last year and a half. And without their guidance and dedication to the process, this plan would not be what it is today. They've worked very hard. They've been to eight formal meetings, numerous open houses, and also facilitated a lot of smaller meetings on their own with staff. So, thank you on behalf of the Oregon City Planning Staff. It's been wonderful to work with you, and I hope we continue to work with you in the future.
Well, thank you. We'll be taking some action over the next couple of meetings. Hunter Teal.
We'll be making an announcement about you later on in the evening.
But if, but if you're interested in knowing what that announcement is, you're gonna have to stay for the whole commission then. Denise Swigert. Bob LaSalle. Adam? Zegel?
We got Marjorie Hughes, and neither one of you are Marjorie.
We got, we got Tom, Tom O'Brien, and... Tom O'Brien, very good. And...
You must have another one here, too.
I do. And there it is. Zeb, and I'm gonna try that right. Laklich?
Yaklich.
Yak, Yaklich.
Very good. Appreciate the great work you're doing. Are you gonna stick around for the next couple of meetings and watch while you're going through all this?
With that, we're gonna have a report from the, from the Friends of the Oregon City Library and their annual report. Coming forward is Linda Orzin.
Third year in a row. Thank you for letting me be here this evening to give you our yearly report. This time I decided to go a little bit technical and did a PowerPoint presentation, so everybody can read along. Okay, what am I not doing right here? Technology is not working properly. Oh, sorry. User error. Anyhow, we all know that our Carnegie library was presented to us by Mr. Andrew Carnegie. And the purpose of the Friends of the Library is to unify people who are interested in supporting the library, foster public awareness, and to support and assist participate in programs that go way beyond the budget of the library. Things that we funded this year were cultural passes, which is something we do regularly, Friday Night Film Series, which we just began last year. A lot of the different programs need extra funding, such as Brooks Robertson, guitarist Cheryl Strayed, who was the author of Wild. She had a huge, huge following at the library. We had 100 tickets, and I believe they were gone in five minutes for her presentation. We did a business after-hours with the Chamber of Commerce. This was in accordance with the Carnegie celebration. We, actually, the Friends went all out this year for the Carnegie celebration, helped with the business after-hours. We bought bookbags to be given out at the celebration. And we also put on a small art fair, which is not here, but it will be coming up soon. Storage unit for the library, disc cleaner, which was badly needed, because most of my discs are very dirty. And $5,000 towards a new microfilm reader, which is being used quite a bit, quite extensively at this point. One thing the Friends actually depend on a lot is our volunteers, especially at the bookstore. So, this year we decided to have a little dedication for our volunteers at our annual meeting. Until I saw some of the numbers that our volunteers have given in the past year, I had no idea that some of them give a lot of their time and effort to the bookstore. For 100 to 200 hours, Roxanne Anderson, Janice Gunderson, and Paula Wells. Paula Wells is a brand-new volunteer this year, but she gave a lot of hours. 200 to 300 hours, April Carr and Fran Mertz. Fran is also on our Friends Committee. I should say Janice Gunderson is also on our Friends Committee. 300 to 400 hours, Bruce Hallick, Carolyn Mistrick, Caroline Lipke, and Karen Maury. And also top volunteer hours were Joni Gibson with 436, Peter Shap 470, and Harriet Shoal 682. And our volunteers also work every summer at the farmer's market, anytime it's not too windy or too rainy. Volunteer time for this year, or for last year, was 4,377 hours, which equals out to $96,906 and a few pennies. This year, we also incorporated what was supposed to be a temporary sculpture garden at the Carnegie Park, which is still up. And we're happy to see that people really enjoy it there, and we hope we can add to it in the future. Participation in events this year, which was going a little above and beyond what we usually do, is, like I said, we coordinated the art show for the 100-year anniversary, installed the temporary art garden, participated in National Light Out, and also did farmer's market book sales. We also had a small book sale at the Carnegie Park. And these were some fun pictures from our anniversary. It really was a great time. We had, figured we had maybe around 500 people or more come through. We gave away all of the bookbags, every single one. Everybody was happy. And there is a rumor that we might just do this again this year.
We're not gonna do the 100th year anniversary again.
101. 101. No, art show, art show. Yes, yes. We wanna, we wanna try and start an annual event that brings the community together, especially around the Carnegie, with everything that will be going on. Our annual luncheon, we, of course, we have our annual luncheon every year in December at the Ainsworth House. And our lovely Maureen gave a little presentation about changes that are happening at the library. And these were some of our winners of some of the gifts that we had.
And they all sat at the same table.
Most of them did, I know.
It was the table you wanted to be at.
And you notice who has, you notice who has the most? Alice Norris.
Yes.
And are there any questions or comments?
The temporary arts? What was?
Temporary artists?
Sculpture.
The sculptures.
Bendai, Stephen Ferris, and Todd Rao.
So, are they gonna be there from now on?
I think they will probably be there until we have construction. They are not, yeah.
So, they're gonna become a part of the park?
I believe so, yeah, yeah. They just keep, keep, keeping them there. They figure, the art, art artists would rather see their work out in public, even if they're not getting paid for it. That's one thing I have to say. We are not paying for these sculptures. They are here just as a loan from the artists. They want their art to be seen by people and enjoyed, and I think they really are.
Just how does one become a friend of the library?
You contact me, or you can go over to the bookstore, and we have applications at the bookstore. Fill out the application, make out a check for thousands and thousands of dollars for the library. And you can become a friend.
Or $10.
Or $10, right. Starting $10 all the way. Well, we don't wanna take too much money, because more money is going to be going to the foundation.
And the bookstore is located at?
At 7th and Center Street, directly across the street. And we are also in the same building as the Three Rivers Artists Guild, which I'm also a member of.
So, is the application online at the website?
No, it isn't. No, no, it's only in physical form.
I'm gonna get those 10 bucks.
I know.
Yeah.
So, you have to stop in the life, in the bookstore?
The bookstore, correct. We also have applications at the library.
Okay.
So, two places.
Correct.
So, everybody enjoy the bookstore and join.
Buy lots of books, and also buy lots of artwork, 'cause it also supports the Friends of the Library and the library. Any other questions?
I did have one more. You gave $5,000 for, what was that?
It was a...
Microfilm?
Microfilm reader.
Do we still use those? Oh, yeah. Okay.
I think the other one was...
Everything's digital now.
Was going, was, was causing a lot of issues at the library, so they desperately needed one.
Oh, great. Thank you for filling that need.
You're welcome. That's what we're here for.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job you guys do.
Thank you so much.
Thank all your great volunteers.
It's teamwork.
Carnegie would be proud of you.
Yes.
Maureen, did you wanna speak now, or is that something for the staff report?
She's, she's ready.
Historical Oregon. That's you.
Very good.
You've been watching too many Olympics.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just wanna reiterate what an amazing group of people the Friends of the Library are, and in particular Linda Orzin has led them for the last three years as Chair of the Board. And she does a phenomenal job, and her enthusiasm and energy and leadership really make a big difference in how it all goes, and she's done a phenomenal job, so shout out to Linda. So, tonight I'm reporting to you about the Digitization Grant. And part of the grant is doing this reporting business. And our project is called Early Oregon Voices: Digitizing Historic Oregon City Newspapers. And, so how does this work? Oh, there we go. Man, thwarted by technology. So, the grant size was $22,905. And actually, though, we've been, they've been able to get more done with the money that, that money. So, actually, they're, continue, they continue to get a little bit more done, and we even threw in like a few more box and got a few more pages done or whatever to wrap up kind of a run of something. But, so this is from the IMLS, and that's part of the LSTA, because here in library land, we love acronyms.
And you're not gonna tell us what they are.
Administered by OSL, Oregon State Library. So, this is a federal program that we do through Oregon State Library, and it's very specific. It can only be for certain things, as all grants are. And then we threw in a few dollars for staff time and stuff like that. So, as we started this, we did not, we were just gonna use our microfilm stuff that we already had, but at the same time, you may recall hearing that Karen Maury actually discovered additional hard copies in, like Milwaukee or Gladstone or someplace, right? Yeah, some weird thing. Somebody had them stashed in the basement of their museum or something. And so, this was actually way better, because the microfilm was of mixed quality, and there were papers, pages that were missing. And, you know, they had been microfilmed off of pages that were bound, and so the middle part of some of the pages were missing and stuff. So, you'd go, you could go look, and there would be the page, but you wouldn't see all the words. So, this turned out to be a much better project, even though it was more work. And we actually had to drop off a title or two of the newspaper that we originally planned, because it was more work. It still turned to much better quality of work. And so, it's, this is all done down at the University of Oregon. They have a project that they've been doing this for a really long time. They have all the equipment, they have all the expertise, they have great people that are down there. And then, the end result is, is all this information is placed online. And I need, I just noticed, I need to get some bookmarks over here, because with the project, we get these free bookmarks that give you the website, so you can go home and, and look it up and everything. And on our website, Sue Adams, our reference librarian who's overseeing this project, has put together tips for using their website, though, because they haven't really done a good job of that. But it's relatively intuitive, so you can go and like, okay, name an Oregon ancestor that one of you has. Mom? Are there moms in the background?
There are.
What? Yeah. So, you just put in that name, and then all the newspaper pages with, with that name will show up, like, instant.
It's great.
And it's incredible.
It is, it is a wonderful...
Yeah, it's a wonderful thing. So, hopefully, what will happen is throughout the state, more people will get interested in digitizing the microfilm that they have. And so, it's, it's already all done, and we're just kind of wrapping up this project, except for the early 1914 issues, okay? And it was also, like, newspapers are called serials, and you can get real technical about this in the library world, in academic libraries, this is like a real, real intense specialty. So, serials are like their own animal. They're like the oddball of the library world, just like every profession has like an oddball in it. And, right? Am I right? Yeah? I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna start naming oddballs in different professions. I'll just take mine on, that's okay.
There are no oddballs in the field of statistics. Which means you're not odd.
So, anyway, how, how, yeah, bring it back. How the, the lives of serials live is really, really weird. And what we discovered is, we thought we had six newspapers, but actually, there's 15 different distinct ones, because the same thing kind of stopped and started, and it was under different ownership and different, different things. But they would borrow the title, because of course, the title had name recognition, right? So, you could sell more subscriptions that way. So, it was actually 15 different distinct things, which was one of the interesting things that they discovered. Here's the whole list of everything, and the two on the bottom had already been on the website before that.
But the other ones had not.
Yeah, the, the ones in blue were all the new, are all the new ones.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, it's really, really cool. So, it really added a lot to people's ability to understand what was going on in Oregon City in the early days.
Yes.
Yeah.
So cool.
And, so, publicizing it, you know, training people in using it, training the trainers kind of thing, and evaluating it is all that's left of the, of this grant, which has been, I think, a really great grant. And the other thing is, it works really, really nicely with the material that is still left on microfilm that we have at the library, which we now can view through this beautiful, amazing digital microfilm reader. So, people can scan things and email them to themselves instantly. You know, you can print off of it. You know, you can use a memory stick. All those things that you can use with other digital technology, you can use with this scanner. And it was great that the Friends kicked in $5,000, 'cause it was a base level price of 10. And then, with some additions, and then just all, you know, time spent setting it up, it was very, very complicated. But now it's set up, and it's in great use. And so, these two things together really provide a very nice, full view of history in Oregon City. So, I'm very pleased to report that to you. Any questions?
I think it's wonderful.
Just make sure I've got, yep, that's it.
I got a question there, just, I've got the list still in front of me, and I see, you mentioned the reason that the Oregon Enterprise listed three times.
Yes.
Two different periods. Are those periods, and then you got breaks, are those periods when the Oregon City Enterprise ownership hadn't been transferred or something, or the actual gaps?
Well, I mean, I would have to go back and research what was going on during the gaps, but probably nobody was running it.
Right.
Yeah. It was just either sitting still, or it was in, all packed up somewhere, or, you know, whatever. But it was not operating and putting out newspapers, yeah, during those gaps, yeah.
I just wanna thank you for, for the work on this, too. This is so, I've been kind of part of it for a little while, at least. It's so exciting, and instead of spending, you know, thousands of, I'm still spending hours on this, but there's so many pieces of Oregon City history that we all know. But there's so many pieces of Oregon City's history that we all know. And there's so many holes. And every time you look at these, you find stuff that you had no idea. Or things that you realized weren't exactly the way you've always heard them.
Right.
This is not only a great asset for our library, but, um, anyone in Oregon City that works at a museum or works, um, doing any type of living history or planning any sort of event where we're trying to reenact or, um, bring some life to the history, this is just enormous. And like I said, I've already spent way too many hours on it. And now that there's more papers on there, I'll be spending even more.
Yeah, great.
Um, and it's still a challenge to navigate your way around it. But it is so cool to be able to just type a name or a place or something and see what you get. Not always do you find what you want, but you do, um, and it's like, you know, anytime you're on the internet, when you find one thing, it leads you to fifty other things. And then before you know it, three days have gone by.
Right. There you go. But Sue will be happy to help you. You know, that's what reference librarians are for too.
It's, it's really cool. So thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. And I want to credit Sue Adams because she is the, the person, the staff person who led the charge on this from the beginning. I mean, it was kind of her idea to like follow up on this grant and she's run with it. And she's just done a fantastic job on it. So I really want to applaud her efforts.
Great, sounds good. How long has this been up and running?
Well, the, the Historical Oregon Newspaper website has been up for several years with different levels of, you know, content. Um, our stuff has gotten up over this past year. I mean, the, more of this stuff has gotten.
Are you finding more interested people in it now?
Yeah, you know, with, with this and with the microfilm reader, I mean, we have quite a few interested people. And I know, um, some really in-depth articles have been written. Jim Nacita has been doing a lot of research at the library. Yeah. So it's great. It's great to see the use of that.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, thank, please, Senator, thanks to your staff too.
I will, I will. Thanks.
Yeah. With that, we'll continue on. Uh, this is our time and we have citizen comments. And I'll just check to see if anybody signed up on it at this point.
Yes, there.
Get out of there.
Three or four.
Yeah. Is it Deanne Mickel? Is that right? And William Gifford, would you both step up in that order and speak? Just to indicate whether you're a resident of Oregon City or not.
I am.
And give your name too.
Okay. I'm Diane.
What is Diane? I said Deanne. Is Diane?
It's Diane with no E. It confuses everybody. Anyway, uh, good evening. Um, I moved here about three and a half years ago. And, uh, I love Oregon City. But, um, I'm here because of the noise. It's getting worse with the, um, loud aftermarket mufflers. I spoke to a police officer and he said, uh, Oregon City did not have a noise ordinance, which surprised me. And I said, well, why not? And he said, that would be a good thing to take up with the commissioners. That's why I'm here. So I want to know, why not? Because, anyway, I live off of Beaver Creek. There's, there's several new subdivisions off of Beaver Creek and, um, Maple Lane. And it's a nice area, but, um, Saturday nights, it sounds like Indianapolis five hundred. And, um, it's, it's, you know, it's just, it's just loud. So my question is, um, maybe why isn't there an ordinance? I thought every city had one. And, um, is there anything in the pipeline to get one? And, or should I put out the for sale sign?
No.
Because it's really, it's getting worse. It's not better. It's getting worse. So...
I guess we can ask either our attorney or our chief whether there is a noise ordinance. They may not know at the moment. It's sort of surprising to me and us, the time we had all the mills in Oregon City.
I don't think there is.
There must have been a mill lobby that actually didn't want us to have noise ordinance.
I don't know.
Yeah.
How long does it take to get one?
Yeah, the lawyer's answer is it depends. It depends on what kind of ordinance you want. Do you want something that's measurable? Or do you want something that deals with peace, quiet, comfort and repose, which is a lot harder to enforce and to present evidence on? I mean, uh, what you need to ask us to do is, uh, is, uh, come up with something and, uh, and bring it to you or bring you a menu of what you're gonna look at. And we can look at what other, other cities have done, but we do, do not have noise regulations.
I think we'll have something to say in future agenda items.
If you want, I can just give a little bit.
Yeah.
There's a little bit of history about, there, there used to be, when car stereos were, were a big deal. And, and then the noise thing was the car stereos and, and a lot of different communities enforced that noise. And that noise or, uh, there were actually state statutes in different states that covered that. And then that became kind of a free speech sort of, sort of thing that some people pushed. And for a variety of reasons, uh, a lot of those statutes went away in, in different states. One of the, the difficult things is what is that level and how do you, it, you know, like Mr. Sullivan said, is, is what's measurable. So how do you go testify in court? And you literally have to come up with a decibel level or something like that. So you can go in court and say that, uh...
If it's vibrating the windows, that doesn't count?
Well, uh, I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just giving you information that I know. It's, uh, that makes it, uh, it, it doesn't change the fact at all that it is an absolute nuisance. I completely understand. There are noise ordinances, but, uh, there's, uh, they're, they're crimes. Uh, and they have more to do with people having parties and this sort of stuff. Uh, it's, it's difficult when a car is going by. It's not impossible. But the reason this is kind of a challenge is having a, a sound measuring device and that sort of stuff that, uh, at the time and, uh, so...
So there's not a specific thing that can be attached to after, aftermarket mufflers? There's not something specifically that can prohibit that?
We may be able to do something along those lines, yes. Um, another aspect I think that, um, Jim was getting to is that, you know, the Department of Environmental Quality had a noise program until about fifteen years ago. The state legislature defunded it. Many local governments depended upon DEQ's program. The rules are still in the books, but there's nobody there to enforce.
There's no enforcement.
And I, I don't think we would want to go after one specific item because I've run into this problem too with the neighborhood noise and not having a way to enforce it. Also, I don't know if it's an inherent problem here in Oregon City, but, how should I phrase this? When the mill closed, I was very surprised the noise didn't go away. We, we have a waterfall that's really, really loud if you live, if you live in this neighborhood. And so, you know, there's, there's background noise that, um, some of us have just learned to put up with. Well, not put up with. It's, it's a nice thing.
Commissioner, I want to tell you one thing that I've seen work sometimes in other cities that I've managed is a pretty active neighborhood watch group. Cause usually this gets down to a handful of, um, folks that are the primary contributors to this kind of thing. And if you can work with the officer that's assigned to your district and try to figure out who those people are and, and come up with an active program, you might be able to identify who, who those people are. And then I'm sure that Chief Bens' folks can have a visit with them.
In your case, you're talking about noise on Beaver Creek itself?
Maple Lane, Beaver Creek runs this way, Maple Lane runs this way.
Actually this might be going through town.
And, well, there's a college out there. There's a high school out there. And Saturday night, just get the earplugs out, you know? It's, it's pretty bad.
For your information, there is, um, the police department has neighborhood watch packets, programs ready to go. And so the officer that's assigned to your neighborhood has access to that. I don't know where those are right now, but...
You know, I, I'm out of cards. If, if you go to our website, everything they've said is true. I'll get you a better answer. Just a, a, a full answer, uh, cause I don't have one off the top of my head. If you go to our website and, and find my, I know my email's on there several times. Shoot me an email so I have your email. And in the meantime, I'll have done some research. I'll get back to you and I'll give you a better answer. And, uh, we'll see what we can do.
And what about July fourth? They have, they have illegal huge rocket fireworks. And I mean, if it comes near your house, you just go up, you know? And I've called the police and they said that we only have four officers on that day, that night. And it, it's ridiculous. It sounds like World War III. I'm not kidding you. It's just, it's ridiculous.
Fourth of July anywhere is like that.
It's really bad here.
It's, it's, I...
I mean, it's those huge loud rockets that just sound like mortars coming in, you know?
No, I, I have that in my neighborhood too.
Do you?
Yeah.
Some of that you'd have to realize too is in the county where you are. It's not all city property. You've got county beyond you with people doing those kind of things in the county.
It's just like two blocks over.
I'll give you my answer in that email too, cause it's a, it's a long. That is, that is a very, uh, there are, there are two polar opposite opinions about Fourth of July. And we hear them both emphatically every year. And neither side really likes our answer. But I will, uh, I will gladly share it with you and, uh...
Well, I just wanted to bring it up because I don't want to move, you know? But it's, it's gonna come, several of my neighbors have already moved because they just says, ugh, we're not putting up with this. So they're gone.
Well, if you do move, I, I've just moved to a place where I don't hear almost anything, anything, no, it's in the city. Otherwise I wouldn't be here. But anyway. The only thing is I occasionally hear a horse whinny.
That'd be nice. I would like that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate you coming here. Mr. Gifford, what's your complaint?
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford and I live in Oregon City. I think it's no secret to just about anybody that I, um, I have the highest regard for our staff. I think that every member on our staff is, uh, is exemplary. I just think we've got the greatest team in the state.
I wish you'd say that sometime about the members of the commission.
Well, I'll tell you what, wish you might have. However, tonight I, I, I feel obliged to, uh, to, to call out one particular member of our staff that I am extremely proud of. I think it's a sign of a good leader to be able to make decisions without all of the facts. I think that we should try to get as many facts as we can, but when you, in, you're never gonna get all of the facts. But getting as much as you can and then, and also in noticing trends. This is, this is an important piece of leadership. And, Chief Bens, uh, to me, is exceptional in many areas. But one is the fact that he noticed a trend, did not have all the facts, and yet was able to spot something that is significant. This was, uh, this was sort of pieced together. Uh, and that has to do with the accident rate in Oregon City. He made a presentation at the Chief's Advisory Committee. Some of that information was, you know, was not all together. And it was, uh, it was, and, and it was presented to the Transportation Advisory Committee last month. We asked Jim to come into the Transportation Advisory Committee. That was last night. He came in basically on his own time, which I was very impressed with as well, as I know all the staff will do if we need them to do that. I have a personal issue here in the fact that I acted like an ass. And, um, I pointed out the fact that his numbers were not scientific. I, I told him that he's not a statistician. He's a hell of a police chief, but no statistician.
A statistician doesn't give you facts. They give you estimates.
Yeah, there you go. Well, that depends. And, and the hypocritical part of it was that I started off the whole thing by saying I wasn't gonna criticize him. And I, I just want to say that, uh, that I'm, I, I just want to eat a huge piece of humble pie because I, in retrospect, I think Jim is doing us a great service by bringing some of these, uh, some of these things that he intuits by his professional gut, which is invaluable and, uh, and greatly appreciated. And, uh, and I just wanted to say I apologize, Jim, for, uh, for not taking your, your, uh, not taking more time to, to assimilate what, the, the message that you were trying to bring to us. So thanks for that.
Thank you. I, I appreciate it. Not necessary, but I, I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I guess, I guess it's okay that we don't, as commissioners, get a, get a compliment like that because it had been indicated that he really said something bad to us at one point. So, anyway. Patrick Bowlen.
I've got some pictures in here. Let's see if I can...
Oh, okay.
I'm pretty good with this. Where's my delete key? Oh, it's password protected. All right, gotcha. Excellent. All right. I'm Patrick Bowlen. I'm a resident here in Oregon City. And for the last five years, I've been leading the open water swims at the Clackamas Cove. And, uh, at the time, nobody knew what an awesome public gem that place is. But we had up to seventy-five swimmers there on any given Wednesday night last summer. And we have more coming all the time. And so it was my bright idea to turn that into a race last year. On June twenty-third, we had the Clackamas Cove Triathlon. And, uh, it doesn't, people would show up and they, they'd say Oregon City. And, you know, they have ideas of what Oregon City are. But you know what? We did, we did the swim in the cove. We came down, we, we biked out Clackamas River Drive. We came, uh, and then we ran through downtown Oregon City and up the grand stairs. And of course, as our, as our, as our, as our base of operations, our transition and finish area, you see there on the picture is, um, Park, Clackamit, Clackamit Park. Is that right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, so for me, just as like simple, simple Joe owned a little business here in Oregon City and I know about triathlons, but didn't know anything about borrowing thirty miles worth of roads in a park to put off something like this. Between me and the Portland Triathlon Club, it was a great community civic kind of moment. A lot of people pitched in to help. In the end, you could see we had a lot of people there. We had three hundred athletes, a hundred and ten volunteers. This year for two thousand and fourteen, we're expecting four hundred athletes and probably the same compliment, maybe a hundred and twenty-five volunteers, along with another hundred or two hundred spectators. Some of the things that this, uh, supported in the city was First City Cycles. We use it as our packet pickup point so that all the registrants would come and, and, uh, into the First City Cycles, right into the place and to buy the tubes and get to see it. And because, you know, they're, they're always begging for people to come to downtown. Therapeutic Associates across the street, uh, also got a lot of publicity and all, and had free massages at the, at the finish line. In addition, the Mount Hood Tourism District, which saw the value of this sort of thing, pitched in to help defray some of the costs to do the downtown run because you always want people to come downtown, right? And so we went up the hill. I think I got another picture of that. Well, here they are starting out in the cove. We start out in heats. But, um, and then so also, uh, we, we had, I, I got to work with probably half of you here at the tables to, to borrow those roads and to borrow the park, including the police and the city engineering and parks as well. Uh, we, we broke even. In fact, a little bit better, which is good because I don't make a living at this. I have a regular job.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I was afraid. Cause it would have been me. It would have been on my dime. Uh, and so we took the money that was left over and we gave a lot of it to the Oregon City Children's Theater. If you've been to one of their productions, you know that they badly need a new sound system. And we helped pay for part of that sound system. So it, I love Oregon City and that's why I wanted it to be here. You can see here, we have the, the T-shirts with the Oregon City icons on it. And then also a number of our sponsors, both in kind, paid and unpaid and just goodwill sponsors, including the City of Oregon City, which is on there, which let us use the park last year. So, um, I just wanted to tell you that that was a great moment and we expect to do it again on June twenty-second of two thousand and fourteen. This is now a tradition in my family and in Oregon City. And I heard somebody say that it's arguably the largest single sporting event in Oregon City. That pulls people from all over the region and it's only bound to get bigger. So that's what I wanted to tell you about today.
Thank you. Well, I have to say I admire you guys running up and down those stairs. I just am amazed.
Yeah.
I think this is great. I mean, it's taking advantage of what we have here in Oregon City, our natural resources and the Cove, which is so valuable. Nobody else has that.
And the Grand Staircase.
Yeah.
Yes.
They came up, and I said, "What'd you think about staircase?" Because I'm totally, totally excited on race day, there's a whole lot going on. And they're like, "Oh, the staircase." Darn you, Patrick.
I've got a question. Do you have somebody monitoring the elevator just in case?
I think there was somebody... There was an attendant in the elevator. If you're going to do something like this, you're not going to be caught dead in the elevator. This is a crowd that likes to move.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Actually, it's so great to have people come forward with these great ideas and implement them.
Yes.
And I really appreciate that.
And thank you for the staff, for the comments. Our staff is very helpful.
Yes, it all worked out.
Good.
You know, some of them were like, "What's a triathlon?
Yeah.
Why do you need to... Who's swimming in the Cove? Wait, is that legal?" I'm like, "It's happening."
Yeah.
My understanding is you did assessment of the water quality and so forth before you did this.
Yes, the Willamette River Keepers, they do a water test every month for E. coli levels, especially because of the water treatment plant that exists just above the Cove.
Right.
What I learned in this process, and we are also supported by the Clackamas River Basin Council in this effort, and this year, we're sponsoring We Love Clean Rivers, is that the water that is put into the... The treated sewage that is put into the water, into the Willamette River, is actually cleaner than the Clackamas River. And so, whereas many places around town that are available for open water swimming shut down, like Blue Lake and Vancouver and these places, they shut down towards the end of the summer because of bacterial infection, the Cove is always open and always clean. And it's always pretty... No boat traffic, because it's kind of too shallow to get in there. And it is a gem for multisport. And I hope that this commission continues to support its open access and parking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
That's great.
Leave it.
Yeah, just leave it.
Yeah. For adoption of the agendas or anything anybody wants polled. Hearing none. We'll go ahead and go into our public hearings. And of course, it's the adoption of the South End Concept Plan and implementing the Comprehensive Plan zoning and code amendments. This is a ordinance that's coming before us. And I'll let Tony Conk... Oh, no, no, excuse me, my apologies.
Thank you.
Peter, if you would go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Neely. Good evening, Commissioners. This is the second City Commission public hearing for the adoption of the South End Concept Plan. I'm going to present a brief PowerPoint here. I'd like to introduce to you Steve Faust and Kirsten Green with Cogan Owens Cogan, who are principals with Planning Process, and also Carl Springer with DKS, Associate Transportation The Concept Plan diagram here you've seen, this is the plan diagram that guides the future growth of the South End area. Some of the planned benefits that you see here are to prepare the urban growth boundary area here for the development of a complete community that embodies the key elements in the South End Concept Plan and the vision and values that were developed, with better choices for walking, biking, driving, and housing variety with amenities closer to home. The Comprehensive Plan map that you've seen is the guiding land use document that implements the Concept Plan. The Planning Commission on February 10th recommended approval 5.0 of the South End Concept Plan. They also recommended some map changes that, because of the limited dollars that we have for mapping, we're going to hold these changes till the March 5th hearing. But some of them are shown on this plan. They include the addition of existing street names, addition of the urban growth boundary lines, city limit line. Some of the icons will change to be more conceptual in nature rather than pinpoints, and a few other things, just to clarify the map. The exhibits that we've entered into the record include an additional findings memorandum from the Planning Commission hearings and an issues matrix, which the Planning Commission used to track and address the outstanding concerns during the public hearing process. We also received a letter of support from Trimest for the plan and a description of the Trimest Southeast Service Enhancement Project outreach update, which you are familiar with. We also have the complete packets, the public comments, and all the exhibits entered at each of the four Planning Commission hearings and work sessions entered into the record this evening. The compliance findings that were presented in the staff report are the compliance with the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan goals and policies, with Metro Title 11, planning for new urban areas, and statewide planning goals and requirements. Title 11 compliance consists of provisions for annexation, housing density, diversity, housing that is affordable without public subsidy, both owned and rented, provision for sufficient commercial development to meet adjacent area needs, and a transportation plan consistent with the regional transportation plan, habitat and water resource protection, public facilities, preliminary cost estimates and funding strategies, a conceptual school plan, and an urban growth diagram. And the South End Concept Plan was found to substantially comply with Title 11 and based on the following attributes. It meets all of the things I just described, but also is tailored to Oregon City. It achieves urban density in the right locations. It supports the visions and values of the South End community. It recognizes that there are transportation constraints in the near term, which are assuaged through the transportation component and the density that's proposed. It's in line with Metro's housing development forecast for the area as well as their expansion forecasts. And Oregon City already uses our urban land very efficiently, and part of the reason for substantial compliance was based on that. And also, the area is next to an urban and rural reserve area, but also Kanema Bluffs and Rural Reserve. So, the density in the plan is transitioned and feathered out towards the edge to account for that. The transportation planning element includes intersection improvements, improved street design, there's a grid to improve connectivity. It's found to be consistent with the regional transportation plan, coordinated with the transportation system plan that we adopted in August of 2013. It uses approved transportation demand modeling methodology, and Metro, ODOT, the county, and city transportation engineer all support the traffic analysis in the plan. The Transportation Advisory Committee also reviewed the transportation element and the plan and voted to approve it nine to zero at their meeting. The issues matrix that is in the record addressed the following outstanding concerns: transportation methodology, transit, public transportation, 99E is an accident route diversion area, wetlands and drainage, senior dwelling floor plans, an additional access road, infrastructure, water supply, geologic hazards, habitat tree preservation, and trails and open space. Now, through the recommendations in the plan and through code amendments that we envision happening in the near future, as well as master plan updates for the sewer and stormwater master plan, which are ongoing with Public Works, all of these items have been addressed. The support for the plan came from a lot of areas, from the community advisory team, who we presented awards to tonight, who was with us throughout the process. Fifteen of our seventeen members have signed the letter of support. A Transportation Advisory Committee, we have letters of support from the following agencies you see here, and also from the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council, who urges us to adopt best management practices, low-impact development standards to implement some of the recommendations in the plan for protection of habitat streams and natural areas. As far as the implementation goes, the zoning code revisions that are accompanying this amendment are fairly limited to implement the plan. Only the code revisions necessary to implement the Concept Plan have been proposed at this time. Other development regulations that could affect development citywide have been put off, but will be considered separately in... Starting in late 2014. And the Planning Commission felt that the issues matrix completely addressed their concerns. What we did was we restated the issues matrix and recommendations as additional findings in the memorandum that we prepared. And based on that, the Planning Commission had voted 5.0 to recommend of approval of the plan and code amendments with those recommendations. Staff's recommendation, therefore, is to continue the public hearing with the record open to March 5th, 2014, when we would have the first reading of the ordinance. We will also be bringing back the final plan document and final map changes to you at that time. And additional hearings may be added if necessary. I know you probably have some detailed questions about the plan itself, and I'm happy to try to answer those or ask our consultants to come up and address those as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take comments from the commission first. I know we've already got several people have signed up. And so, we'll watch and see, we score up here. I guess I might start. Of course, I heard a great deal in the process about concerns about the density and concerns about traffic, and those seem to be among the top concerns that were coming up. I guess one of the things I worry about, and maybe you can address it at the next meeting, one of our mechanisms that we deal with dealing with these things are systems development charges, but the difficulty is we don't get those monies until the development is occurring. And one of the questions I would have are there mechanisms that we can identify that can deal with some of the infrastructural problems where systems development charges can be brought in at a later point to pay for those developments? And I know one of the challenges is that we have order approved annexations, so you don't have any guarantee when a development is going to occur. But those are... That was something that I was trying to think through a little bit. How do we get some of these issues dealt with more ahead of the process than we've normally seen? And I'm not expecting an answer at this point, but it's something that I'd like you to think about as we go forward.
I guess I would just respond that I'm not sure that that's a concern that's unique to just South End.
No, I understand that.
It's a citywide concern that we have of how do you, as a... How do we, as a city, fund these larger infrastructure improvements when you haven't... When either it's because the existing condition is causing it rather than new development? And where do you get the funds for it? I mean, essentially, you know, you've got somewhat limited options, you know, whether that be a local improvement district, relying on your SDCs to try to put together that package grants, you know, some combination of those, or, you know, some type of a general obligation construction bond that goes to the vote of the people, you know? So, I don't want you... You know, if we go away and talk about this for a week, I mean, there's not that many options. I think it's really identifying what are the priorities and trying to identify, okay, what's the best way to accomplish that, and trying to start knocking these down one by one. But really, there's no special program or way to really do that with where we're at as a community.
I think, just to add to that, you know, what the Concept Plan does is identify where funding gaps occur, identify some of the mechanisms that you can use to address those issues, and then you continue to refine those as you move forward. The planning level estimates for public infrastructure in the plan are adequate for in a Concept Plan, but clearly need refinement as conditions change and time moves on. So, we are aware of that, and I don't think that adoption of the Concept Plan itself solves that problem. You're still going to, you know, deal with that as you move forward through the public infrastructure master plans and those sorts of things.
And this was actually one of the areas in the city where the property owners slash developers came together to form a reimbursement district, and they went in and put in the force main for the sanitary sewer down South End and have been reimbursed back on that as housing development has occurred in the last... I figure, I think it's been about 10 years or so, I think that that one was in existence. So, it has been done, but that one was more private-driven than public-driven because of the need to get the sanitary sewer out there. But, you know, if it is a priority, it's, you know, that's where you start having the discussions with willing property owners. And it's a little bit difficult out here because it's so parcellized, rather than, you know, you're dealing with a lot more property owners that you need to get on board, rather than some of the other areas around the city where you have much larger lots to work with to try and get that critical mass to make the investment and payback work.
Well, any other comments or think, Commissioner?
You've got a list.
I've got a list, but I'm talking about...
We're down at the bottom.
Yeah, can we push those Commissioners on top, please? Carol, are you the first one up here?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Well, I went over the additional findings with a fine-tooth comb, got my highlighter out and everything. This is our public input, and I just want to thank all the citizens that gave their input, brought up really good points. And then the Planning Commission that went through it. And even though there are many points where it says that they found the existing regulatory protections adequate, but in each case, they went above and beyond and did... Offered suggestions in what could be better. So, always looking for, you know, what can we do to better protect and make sure that those concerns are, you know, addressed. So, I just want to thank the Commission for the great job they did on such a big project and just the tremendous work, and they buckled down and dug into everything, didn't they?
They did, definitely. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and, you know, it was a very difficult job to kind of get your arms around some of those concerns and issues, because some of them are within the scope of a Concept Plan, and some of them are larger issues.
Right.
But, you know, you can resolve those through these ongoing recommendations, I think.
Commissioner Moon?
My question is the Planning Commission. Don't we have seven people on that?
Yes, and we have.
So, why was it a 5.0?
They were excused absent.
They were gone. So, I still have the concern about transportation.
Sure.
So, I haven't seen that addressed.
Right. Well, I've got Carl here, who can come up and answer any questions you might have about that. The... And I'll just kind of briefly introduce the topic, and then we can discuss that. So, the plan... The Concept Plan builds on the Transportation System Plan, and there were some additional units in the Concept Plan, 400 additional units. And Carl's firm did the additional analysis and looked at all the intersections that might be affected by that additional density and found that they were adequate, given the improvements that are proposed in the plan to handle that additional capacity. So, you know, they've addressed that. And ODOT and Clackamas County looked at the intersections that affected the areas that they're responsible for and concurred with the methodology as well. So, there's a detailed list of lane widens and turn lanes, various things like that.
Right, right.
So, yeah.
Carl, go on.
But you're still going to bottleneck.
Sure.
When you go down towards High Street.
Yeah.
Or 99.
So, yeah, there were concerns about the area that is outside the study area that goes down the hill, and we talked about that at the Planning Commission. You know, that's not an area where there are any intersections proposed, so...
Right.
Yeah, but they did analyze those intersections, and you want to talk about that?
Yeah. Good to see you again.
Evening. So, the question is about the bottleneck going downhill.
Yes, yes. How are you going to get all those cars?
Slowly, is how you're going to get all those cars.
Slowly. Congestion.
Yes, there will be congestion, yes. I mean, I think I said that at the Planning Commission hearing, and maybe it's kind of obvious, but, you know, as this part of the city builds out, basically, there certainly will be more congestion than there is... will be more congestion than there is today. That's kind of undeniable, and, and what our charge is to make sure that we're recommending facilities that measure up to the city standards and to the city expectations that they would place any other place in the city. So we've laid out a framework of street and intersection and connectivity improvements to achieve that as growth occurs. But yes, in the end, it will take longer to get out than it does today.
But I think that area's a lot more construc-
strained?
Constrained, thank you.
It's painful to listen to you talk, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's getting us all sick.
I'm not.
Yes, you are.
I'm not gonna get you sick.
I'm heart sick.
Sorry.
Right.
So that area, I mean, you got the bluff on one side.
The bluff on one side, right.
And the county has the ownership for the 99.
Well, yeah, yeah, if you go south on South End, yeah, right, that's county.
And if you go down to High Street, you got the cliffs.
Right.
So there's no way you can.
So is your question getting to whether or not you should be expanding those rooms? Is that what your question?
Well, I wanted to know, how are you gonna get those people, if it goes to full development, how are you gonna get them without having to sit in traffic for hours?
Can I add on to Betty? Well, can I be of your voice for a moment?
Yes.
I have the same concerns. People coming up 99 right now, at times the traffic turning left on the second street is backed up to the tunnel. And if we add that many dwellings up there with no other way to get to that area?
Right.
We're just asking for a huge disaster. And then on top of that, the report that Betty forwarded us about the federal transportation funding being $130 billion short, we're not gonna be getting money for this.
No, yeah, I wouldn't expect federal help.
In any case, I guess.
No, well, but this is, this is nationwide, statewide, too. This affects the state funding. And so.
This is a total separate topic.
Right, but I don't see how we're going to get around this bottleneck problem outside of the concept area. I think the concept area plan is great.
Yeah.
But, boy, I don't see a way around it.
Well, two pieces I'll say in responding to that. I mean, one is bear in mind, your TSP has a connection that would give you another way to get out, so you're gonna have another way to get to Central Point than you do today. So that piece is built, that would be another way for people to get there. The other piece is that your, your, what's your, well, how do I phrase this without being offensive? The thing is, what'll happen as things grow in Oregon City is, the period, the busiest part of the day will get longer. So instead of being 30 minutes or 45 minutes, it'll be an hour or an hour and a half. And so people will choose to, over time, leave for, if they, if they still live in that neighborhood and they still work where they work, instead of leaving at a quarter after seven to get there, they'll leave at quarter to seven, or they'll leave at 6:30. And so what happens is, the total volume of traffic in an hour does change, but there's, you're not, you're not shooting for the one hour period, you're now shooting for a two hour period. That's how, that's the biggest thing, is a temporal shift. It's not, I'm not trying to, our, we're not, our effort is not trying to upsize the roads to allow people to commute the same way they do now with the same travel times. That's the basic fundamental difference, and so you'll have a longer period of travel than you do today. And that's, it's a, it's a, it's a policy that's, that's in your TSP. I mean, you're, you're basically, you're recognizing, I mean, we, I think we had this discussion.
Yes, we did.
About, let's plan for the whole day instead of for three or four hours, and this is one of those kinds of outcomes, is you recognize that during those busy hours of the day, you'll have a lot of traffic, at certain locations there'll be a lot of congestion. You have to recognize that people are pretty smart, and if that is, if there is a recurring problem, they'll either go different times a day, they could go different routes, they could choose, you know, think of the, think of the demographic dynamic over time. That's the other thing we're doing, is we're kind of freezing everything in place, and over time, people make deliberate choices about where they work and where they live to shorten their commutes. So if their commute becomes unbearable in a particular community or particular situation, one of those things will change, right? I mean, so all those dynamics are in play, and we're, so we're not saying it's gonna be the same as it is today, it'll be much more congested, for sure. But what we're, what we are saying is we're providing a list of improvements, and most of those frankly were already in your TSP. There's a lot of fine-grained things that are represented in the plan that weren't there, but the trunk line stuff on the arterials and the collectors was represented and is carried forward in this, so. Now, I can't say it's gonna be as nice as it is today, it'll be much more congested, but our task is to make sure that we're delivering a system that is, that is consistent with the city's own standards and those other agencies' own standards, and I think, I think it's an unhappy, you know, outcome that 20 years from now, this will be, there'll be more growth, there'll be more congestion for certain hours of the day.
Oh, I, I agree, and I think it will build out. There's no doubt about it. So I guess, Tony, the Beaver Creek Concept Plan and Park Place, where are we at with them? The commission adopted them.
South End, or, I'm sorry, South End. Park Place Concept Plan has been adopted. Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan was appealed to Luba and then to the Court of Appeals. We're waiting for a decision there, so we're gonna have to bring that back.
So let's just focus on Park Place. So it's been adopted, so what does that mean?
It means that the comprehensive plan designation, and in that case the zoning code, has been adopted.
And acknowledged.
And acknowledged, so it's in place, and at this point, it's up to property owners who wish to develop to annex to the city.
Okay, perfect. I won't ask anymore questions.
So that process can take a long time. It just depends on development. I have one other question. So on Goal 12.1, and it talks about the planning commission recommended approval, the concept plan also includes to update and refine traffic count, to review and monitor traffic intersections, and to continue to review transportation SDC rates. So what do they do with that information when they get it and review it?
Well, I think with respect to traffic counts, I mean, we already do traffic counts through Public Works, but each time a development is approved or reviewed, I mean, they do their own transportation analysis to take into account the impact of that development, so we get that ongoing information. With respect to the system development charges that we currently charge, you know, we will review those to see whether those are currently adequate to support the infrastructure in the South End Concept Plan. There is a funding gap identified in the plan, but how we fund it needs some further, further analysis.
But would that affect approval of any development, even though it's in the concept plan? I mean, could that influence?
Well, the first step would be annexation, and we have to make findings during the annexation hearings that the infrastructure is adequate or can be funded prior to a certificate of occupancy, but by that time, you know, that's the second bite of the apple. Then you would have a rezoning proposal and then a development proposal, so there's usually two or three or four additional processes that allow you to refine that analysis as you go forward, so.
So these recommendations should help keep things in check theoretically?
I believe so. We, each time an annexation occurs, we review the annexation against whatever plan is adopted for it, and so Park Place annexations were viewed against the Park Place Concept Plan. Estimates, were they adequate? Public Works weighs in on that based on current information, and then that's how we move forward.
Can I just say one more thing? I think our staff has done a wonderful job of outreach to all of the community members, and I know that you guys have been beat up a few times by this, but I do want you to know I do appreciate and support what you guys have done, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a couple of things, if I might. This is several years ago, and I don't know if it's really reflected in the current TSP. It was a discussion, and it was a very earlier TSP, is that I saw it come before the commission, where serious consideration was given to better development on McCord Road, which goes into Leland. You know, mechanisms, we go up, we can see, of course, Warner, Warner parrot is a, is a mechanism giving order to Beaver Creek and alternative route to using 99. That Leland Road itself's a mechanism going over, getting over to 213 as well, and is that really, has that, has that been really considered anymore as a, as a major route for getting out of this particular area?
Actually, I, the, the original TSP had kind of a, what we now have is a loop trail. There was something similar to that that was, that was shown on the TSP that was actually spanning some pretty significant topographic valleys.
Right.
And so in this TSP, we recognized the fact that that was just not gonna happen based on the kind of funding that we had. So other than the intersection improvements, roadway improvements within that roadway network, and then, of course, the loop trail, which I think is an important piece, because as we see the Beaver Creek Concept Plan area develop, in theory, you're gonna have housing in these areas here that might be utilized by those people that are working in the Beaver Creek Concept Area, or maybe even, you know, in some of these small commercial areas that would maybe not always use the loop trail, but the hope would be that that would be a convenient enough trail system so that people would tend to want a bike to work. They wouldn't have to navigate, you know, the hill, the hills that we have to get down to downtown, they could just skirt the edge of, edge of the city to get to the Beaver Creek Concept employment areas. So I think that's a long answer for what you asked.
The other thing is, on these intersection diagrams, I'd like to, I'd like to review what some of these things are. I think there was more than one of them, but we're, I'm not sure which, which section it is, there's an Exhibit B to the concept plan, and we have here, I think, what are essentially numbers of turns on intersections, and then we're, then we're given something that are decimal point values. Can you, and I'm talking about a piece that looks like this over here. And I knew at one time what those were, but I don't, I forgot. So if you could guide me into some of these diagrams that we're actually seeing here.
Mayor, the diagram that you just held up was a traffic count, and so I'm not sure what decimal value.
Well, over, over here to the right, you have another diagram for the intersection that are decimal point values, and I presume it's a ratio of some of these.
No, no, those diagrams, all they are are observations of what's out on the facility today. They aren't doing a performance assessment or an operational analysis, it's strictly, what they usually report is, you know, number of vehicles, bikes, buses, heavy vehicles, those kinds of things, and so I would guess what the percentage you're referring to is some percentage of those other kinds of vehicles, like, like heavy trucks, you know, they'd say one or two or three percent.
Okay, that's probably right.
That makes some sense, because they aren't calculating level of service, they're just saying, here's what we observed for these three hours on this one day, that's data that we take, and then we do our capacity analysis.
Any more questions?
Before I go, I would like to invite Kirsten Green up just to say a few.
You bet.
Remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
You feel better?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, thanks for having us in. This has been a, a very thorough process, as Commissioner Mom just pointed out. My name is Kirsten Green, I'm a principal with Cogan Owens Cogan, and for over 40 years we've been working in Oregon's land use planning system, and for myself, 18. And Carl touched on it, you know this, this is your job, but to manage the process of change is not smooth, nor should it necessarily be. When we did our background research and looked to apply for the contract to work with you on this, to work with Pete and his team on this, I knew it was going to be daunting. We've done a tremendous amount of work in Clackamas County, and we took great care to design a program that would listen to community members first, and you've heard presentations on this. I don't mean to repeat, but with the community advisory team members in the audience here still watching and listening, I want to just absolutely commend them for their patience. They worked through dozens of these kinds of conversations, and you're right to ask these questions. Carl, without Carl, you know, Carl's patience and commitment with the city staff to work through and look at, are these the right treatments? These are great concerns that have been raised by concerned citizens, and we treat them all carefully and with respect. We have designed a, with the community, and these are really community source diagrams that you see in front of you. I don't know if you remember the images of the community members drawing them, themselves working through the math of future neighborhoods, but the values of rural character, livability, the walkable neighborhoods for future generations, these are things that are hard to imagine today. Change is hard, and we want to make, your job, you're doing your job to make sure it's managed correctly. We didn't envision originally that there would be commercial nodes here to provide local options for people to live and work within South End without having to use the existing transportation system that's there today. So I do feel that it's a beautiful plan, consistent with the standards, as Carl just said, that are in your TSP, with a reasonable balance between conservation and development for current and future generations of Oregon City, so I hope on March 5th you will consider adopting the plan. Thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you.
Before you leave, Commissioner Smith, I know you're up here.
Oh, no, I think we've covered everything that, that I was gonna talk about. I also was at the extensively long planning commission meeting, so I think, I think I have nothing to say at this point.
Okay, very good. We'll go out to other, other people then, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Would Ginger, Ginger Redlinger and Tom O'Brien come forward, please? So you are gonna sit around through the whole commission meeting and say, and learn at the end what I, what else I'm gonna say?
I gotta hear what you're gonna say about.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Commissioners, I'm Ginger Redlinger. I work at the Oregon City School District at Eastham Community Center, and proud member of the Southeast Community Advisory Team, South End Community Advisory Team. Once again, I am impressed by the thorough work that the committee has done, and Pete and crew, with the comments that were brought forward and concerns. Also addressing concerns by the Commissioner, we appreciate your input as well, because you see things from a different perspective than we do sitting in the meetings. We love the plan, we, we think it's getting close to moving forward, and we appreciate everyone continuing to give their feedback on the plan. I like the matrix, I like the response, I like thoroughness, and I, makes me feel even better about the plan, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work on the committee.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, and City Commissioners, what Ginger didn't say was that she was a key element in that CAT planning process. She at the time was principal, moved off in grade school, and made that facility available for a number of our meetings and open houses. Having been on the CAT team, I too echo all of the comments that people have had regarding the work that Pete has done, and Steve, and Kristen, and that the team did. I, I think it's a wonderful plan. I do have one concern, and it's not in the plan area, it's a concern that is citywide in my opinion, and the sheet that I've handed out to you is something I would like to walk you through. Basically, I think the consideration needs to be ultimately, and it, you know, maybe after the plan is approved, I don't know, but where will the traffic go? If we're going to put that much traffic, you know, Lake Oswego on one hand has their density down in the city center with condominiums and roads that can handle the density. In our case, we're talking about, and, and Carl's right, you know, people will change their, what they do, their habits. I change my habits all the time, something I've, the last five years, I have not driven to Portland unless absolutely necessary, and I will not drive earlier than 9:30 in the morning or after 3:00 in the afternoon. So I'm not one of the people that's contributing to this massive automobile traffic. However, Carl indicated that the traffic is going to divert, and common sense tells me that that diversion will go down Lynn and will go down Malala. It has to get to the areas that take people to their jobs. It has to get to the areas that take people to their jobs. Yes, some people are able to leave an hour and a half or an hour, forty-five minutes earlier. However, schools, universities, all of those kinds of places that work on a set clock, those people cannot divert very far. I mean, try to be, try to be early or late for work there on clocking. One of the outlets that's ultimately planned for the area is going past Doug's house, and that area will necessitate some navigation over water in order to have it accomplished. And on our own TSP, it's rated as long-term. John Lewis has stated in the Planning Commission Committee meetings that the Clackamas County folks do not have anything on their TSP to resolve that issue on the hill. And that's the problem. If it can't go down the hill, it is going to take one of those other two routes, either Malala or Lynn. Thank you.
And thank you for your efforts, Tom, in, in participating in the committee and being, and sticking around with it. Appreciate it. With that, Bob LaSalle, Paul Edgar.
My name is Bob LaSalle. I live in Oregon City, and as Vice Chair of the Transportation Advisory Committee, I'd like to report the TAC on January twenty-first voted unanimously to support the transportation element of the South End Concept Plan, as supplemented by any information brought forward by DKS and Associates, and that was a unanimous approval of the, of the transportation portion of it. And on a personal note, I'd like to apologize to the race coordinator for the triathlon. I was, of course, you all know I was signed up for that.
Back down.
Thank God I had a sore finger.
There's always next.
And thank you for your serving, not only in the TAC, but also on the committee. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Paul Edgar. I'm a resident of Oregon City. If you, I would like to, if I could get that around for a second. I would just echo that there's, as part of what I, I have said here, is that there is no question that there's a need to develop a responsible South End Concept Plan. And what was forwarded to you by the Planning Commission often was referred to as having, not being perfect, and in some cases, having real issues, and I'd like to try to identify those issues. Number one, creating unprecedented density of twelve to fourteen dwelling units per acre on the fringe of the city, and that's fifty-four percent of the developable land is to be R-three or greater, or in densities. This is amazing. If you look at, we had a Planning Commission meeting, ZC thirteen oh-two was on Central Point Road on trying to rezone property, and in that Planning Commission, most every one of the Planning Commissioners stated that they didn't see any reason for having less than R-eight on the fringe. And here, we're going to R-three, R-six, R-three, all of these things are significantly higher densities. And the most important part of these density problems is, is that it really places our city in the ability, in a position where we cannot be really in compliance with senior housing. So, if Doug, or somebody, or a person like myself can't be living on a two-story house, now all of a sudden, these lots are thirty-three feet wide or less, or two thousand square foot lots, and you just go up, and it's really very difficult, if not impossible. And what we're doing is, everyone recognize, let's, just like what Kathy said, if you're going to have density, let's put it in where you have transit and where you have the ability to service it. There isn't this ability. So, what we do is, we promote tall and narrow style houses. Now, the, with twenty-six to twenty-nine hundred dwelling units, what we see with no transit options and virtually no ability to ever envision transit options, knowing not only what TRIMET has, but if we don't get away from TRIMET, we can't even go out to can be area transit. So, the trap, the transportation model that we came back with, when we analyzed it, and I'm a numbers guy, I'm a nerdy type of guy that gets down into the detail of it, I went through with Tom, and we analyzed the actual trip counts on South End Road at Warner Parrot. And what we found, in a two-hour period, we were, had twenty-four hundred and five trips in two thousand and eleven. Twenty-four hundred, well, if we extrapolate from that, what they were modeling, all of a sudden, we find a third to fifty percent of the trips just disappeared off the book, they're not even accounted for. We already know we had that many trips there, and now, all of a sudden, those trips are just disappear. And so, we counted the number of trips that they had, even on South End Road or Warner Parrot, and many of those trips and assumptions are just absolutely not accurate. So, when we get into these things, what it boils down, I was in the Transportation Committee of, of Clackamas County, and when we went through some of the modeling, and this new gamma model that Metro uses, what it does is, it levels it out. So, what they're saying is that this trip count will spread out over four hours AM, four hours in the PM. So, we're going to have eight hours of absolute capacity congestion at these intersections. And so, when we analyze this, even this one intersection, and it's, I can tell you, the trips that flow down, right down to Second and High Street, they're going to flow everywhere. And it's going to put our city into chaos in, in two thousand and thirty-five if we have full build-out. So, this will destroy the quality of life on, on Point C. The, it will reduce the long-term property values and property tax values. The financial implications of trying to make improvements to solve the problems just are not there. They're unrealistic. So, when we know that fifty percent plus of all of the trips, even their own mapping showed fifty percent of the trips going in the AM, PM type peaks are trying to find jobs going north, it's, right now, we show it is in excess of that. So, even with the existing things. And we show right now with, in the neighborhoods and Butel Road, we're getting approximately, for all of the residential units, we're getting one trip per all residential units right now through those intersections, based upon actual trip counts. So, when they reduce that to some other fictitious level, it doesn't sync in with the reality of physical counts that we know exists from trip wires. So, the real solution, I'd like to go down, what do we need to do? What, what changes need to be made to the South End Concept Plan? First, we must reduce the density, and to do, reduce the densities, we've got to get less lots. We, we should eliminate all R-three or less zoning that results in twelve to fourteen dwelling units per acre, and it would be my, my opinion that we could create some more gradual ones, R-six, R-eight, and R-ten, going up from that, where right off of South End Road, R-six, then R-eight, and then R-ten. But right now, we've got to create something that will probably have a one-third to a fifty percent reduction in the density levels, or, or we're, we're, we're trying to take steps on something that's not practical, can't be realized, and has financial implications, and really hurts the quality of life of everyone, and doesn't comply with equal housing mindsets, and will put kids on the streets where they won't have yards. It's, this is just, we, we need to make a change. I think you really need, one thing, it would be really nice to sit down sometime where we could take a moment and go through all of these trip counts. I've analyzed every single trip count, where they go, what, north, south, east, west, how they affect, what the actual trip counts are on South End Road, what they are on, on Warner Parrot. These things need to be out on top of the table, because without that type of knowledge, what you're doing is, you're, you're taking something that's been figured out by a computer, not by reality. You've got to get back to actual numbers that we physically know, and the, and the count, how many people are going to be making trips, and we can extrapolate that real easy. And right now, what they've presented to you just does not sync in, and I can prove it if anyone cares. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one comment. We have to, we have to, we have to deal with that transit issue. We will deal with that transit issue. We're not the only one in the pack. There are, there are other communities that pay into the transit tax that don't have any transit at all going to that. So, it's an issue that we, we have to deal with, and it ultimately may not be dealt with through TRIMET. It might, may, may be some other mechanism of dealing with it. Zeb, I'm not going to mess up your last name this, this time, but I will ask you to say it again for me, and maybe I'll eventually get it. Denise McGriff, will you both come forward? And Zeb, will you again repeat your name?
My last name is Yaklich.
Yaklich?
You got it that time.
Can I hold on to it? That's a question.
Yak, Yaklich.
Yaklich.
It doesn't matter. Anyway, my name, last name is not Yaklich, though.
Zeb, I'm going to make a request. I usually do it in the order in which I call them forward, so, don't be a gentleman, it's my fault you're not.
Well, thank you very much for having us here this evening. As I had stated before, I'm an Oregon City resident with a young family, ranging, actually, not so young anymore, I've been here for about eight years, so, they've gone through Beaver Creek School and into the high school, and then I have some that are still in Beaver Creek. One of the reasons I joined this was to have some say in how a community has actually developed. Some of the issues that my wife and I had seen when we moved here were ones we didn't want to see repeated with a new community. And so, I feel that really, the, the CAT Committee has come up with a very good plan that takes into consideration many parts of how a community would be built out. I definitely understand many of the complaints about traffic, as I'm a person who commutes from Oregon City into Portland for my job. And so, there's always that consideration when I'm on two thirteen, why did I move all the way out to Oregon City when my job is in Portland? But it has to do a lot with the area and the beauty that's around us. I fish, so there's a lot of rivers that are here, and it happened to be thirty minutes closer to Mount Hood, which I ski a lot. So, those types of, those types of elements are a lot of the reason, I think, other families will want to move out here in the future. And I think that really, the consideration that was taken into putting this plan together was well thought out. There's obviously going to be nuances that need to be thought out even more as time goes on, and how some of those things will be addressed. And I believe that that's one of the, the key pieces that Pete and his team actually reached out to the community, is to make sure that we look at those and address them before it becomes an issue. And that's, that's the primary piece that I'd like to leave the Commissioners with.
Thank you. Ms. McGriff?
Denise McGriff, and I'm a resident of Oregon City, and along with Zeb and the other people in the audience from our citizen advisory team, we had a very good process, and I appreciate the opportunity to testify. I'm in support of the adoption of the plan, and I want to again get on the bandwagon and acknowledge one more time the stellar performance by our staff, Pete and Steve and Kirsten. They did a great job. I think that one of you, Betty, you mentioned that there was a great deal of citizen outreach, and I think, as you said, we got a couple of black eyes on previous processes where we, it didn't appear that we had done enough. So, I want you to know that there were a lot, and I had Pete and Steve repeat that several times at the Planning Commission level, so that it would be on the record. But you can well imagine that at the Planning Commission hearing, we did have some citizens come in to say they had never heard of it, they never received a notice, and that always happens. But I do know for a fact that they, they mailed, we, we actually saw the mailing list, we saw where it went. We know that sometimes people get things from the city that they go, and, and it gets in the trash. But the thing I think is most important that, that I want to reiterate is that while the plan itself was a collaboration, there was, it represents the majority interest in the area, and it was not development-driven, it was community-driven, and I think that's really important, that that be on the record, because there was no big development being proposed. People who started out being against the process, saying, I don't want anything, maybe moved a little more to the center to say, well, if I don't have a say in what my area is going to look like, then I don't really feel I should be complaining down the road. So, they got on board. They didn't agree with everything we didn't agree every time, but we had a consensus about what was, what was going to happen, and I think that's really important. I think it's been, it's been pointed out to you that the plan is fluid. It's not etched in stone, and I think that we're going to be looking at it over time to make those course corrections about things that we know that need to be looked at again. And I think just particularly to bring out what Pete had talked about, is that we had a lot of discussions about wetlands and natural areas, and it's very difficult to do those on a lot-by-lot basis. You kind of have to do a larger study. I don't know where we're going to get the money or the resource to do it, but I know that there is a desire on the city's part to seek resources, to do that work, so we're not having to look at this piece of property and this piece of property without looking at a broader picture of where those areas are. And we know that they're out there. I mean, I think some of us have been out there when Rose, Rose flooded.
Yeah.
And so, we know that that happens. So, I think, I think that all in all, that it's important for all of us to remember that just because the comp plan has been applied to this document, it is not being zoned, it is not a development plan, it is a concept plan that will have changes to it over time, and that its development is not going to happen tomorrow. And I think we still have some people that make the leap that it's zoned this, and it's going to happen tomorrow. It is not going to happen tomorrow. If it happened tomorrow, I think I would be scared, I think we should all be scared.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's not going to happen over tomorrow. It's going to happen over a long period of time, and I think that we are doing the right thing by trying to get ahead of what might happen, and maybe it won't happen, but then again, if it doesn't, we can make a course correction, and that's what planning is really all about. So, I just appreciate the opportunity to testify in support of the plan, and it was a lot of work, and I would definitely do it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Zeb Yaklich and Denise McGriff, thank you very much again for serving on that committee. Is there anything at this point, staff wishes to comment on, or do you simply want to go ahead with our continuation? That's up to you, your call at this point.
We have, you know, you've heard some questions about, I mean, if there's more questions that you have based, I mean, that we didn't answer earlier, or that came up during the public presentation, I mean, our goal would be to try and answer your questions, or at least get them and bring back a clean ordinance for adoption at the next meeting. I mean, we were, so.
Can I just make a comment?
Absolutely. I don't know if you can, but you're willing to try, you're sure welcome to try.
I think, I think what's interesting about this area as well, if you look at everything south of Warner Parrot in this area, if you go back and look at the annexation map of how quickly this area built out, and I think one of the biggest detriments to this area was not having long-range planning or a concept plan in place. You don't know how many times we've been looking at a new subdivision, and it's like, if we would have just put a street stub here instead of a cul-de-sac, how much better the bike, pet, and transportation would be. This area completely lacks parks, lacks trails, and it was, it's, it's, we miss an opportunity. And so, this gives you that opportunity to guide the development that you're going to see in this area. We update our transportation system plan regularly, periodically, required to by the state. We will be looking at these as, as the information becomes more clear, as development continues, as these assumptions that we make get tested in five years, in ten years, in fifteen years, we will make, as Denise said, those adjustments to address it. It's a starting point, and it gives you a good map to build upon. When someone comes in for a zone change or an annexation, you have something to actually use now as a guide. So, that's, there are certainly issues, and we've tried to identify those. I think the Planning Commission gave some good recommendations on options, on how to stay on top of this, how to check back on these, and, and, you know, we can, we can discuss trips and methodology, you know, we have DKS here to try and help with that if you have questions about that. But we did reach out to Oregon Department of Transportation, Clackamas County Transportation, Metro Transportation. We use our own internal consultant to do a peer review of DKS's work. You know, we've, we've got a methodology that's, that's supported, and, you know, if you want to go into a different direction, you know, we, we can certainly have that conversation. into a different direction, you know, we can certainly have that conversation.
The comment that I wanted to make was the fact that I do appreciate the plan, and I think we do have to provide transportation, not just cars, but, you know, bike, pad, bikes, buses. I think that if it starts getting busy out there, I think we can reevaluate with our transportation system, and maybe TRIMET will come on board. And I do think we need to offer a variety of house sizes. I do think that some people want to be in a little place. Once you get a little older, you maybe don't want to have two stories, but that's your choice, you know? So I, the only problem I have is the transportation.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, if, in adopting this, where I'm hung up is it's saying implementing comprehensive plan and zoning code amendments. Those zoning code amendments, are those set in stone, or is it zoning up to what's recommended in the plan? So say, right now, somebody's got 10 acres, and he's on an R10, so he's going to get 100 lots. I don't know what he's going to get there. Anyway, so can he change that? Does he have to change it up to R3?
So we, the comprehensive plan is going to identify areas of low-density residential, medium-density residential, high-density residential, commercial. And so in low-density residential, you'd have your R6, your R8, and your R10. Medium, you'd have your R3.5 and your R5. So it's really driven by your comprehensive plan designation. And so then they would be annexed in, and then a zoning designation would be decided through.
What, the plan states?
Well, we're going to the comp plan level, not, we have a two-step map. We have a comp plan, and then we have a zoning map. And so that zoning map, you have those three categories, and that's a decision that's going to have to be made at a later date, as to what zone goes in there.
Okay, but so right now, what is written in this plan is just a recommendation. It's not?
The comprehensive plan will be adopted, so we'll have low-density resident. Am I answering your question?
No.
Okay. Is there a picture that you're looking at?
No, I'm not looking at a picture. Well, say, okay, we go back to this guy that's got the 10 acres, and say that he wants to put in a development of R6. But in the plan, it's showing that he's in the high-density R3.5.
He would not have an, he would have to change the comprehensive plan to low-density to have R6. So if the comp plan said high-density, if the comp plan said medium-density, he'd have to be either R3.5 or R5. If he wanted to be R10, we'd have to change the comp plan.
So he would come in for a zone change.
A comp.
You have to change both.
You have to change both, yeah. So I think, yes.
That answered me. Thank you.
And I would just add that the transportation analysis is based on the highest density zone within the comprehensive plan designation. So it's sort of a worst-case scenario analysis. That's where you get the high end of the range, and then what the plan actually is shown. The 2,600 units is the mid-range.
What that means is that where you see low-density residential on the comp plan map that will be adopted, the worst-case scenario would assume everything was R6. So the lowest, the highest density allowed in the low-density residential zone. So you could be R6, R8, R10. So the worst-case assumed R6 along all that low-density residential.
Thank you.
That's where we come up with that range, and why it's different.
Any more questions or comments? I've got a comment. I'll wait for the next meeting. Well, I'll just go ahead and state it now. I know there's a great concern about density. The difficulty that we face is, is if you don't do the density here, where do you do We get these comments, but I can guarantee you that urban growth expansion is not going further south here. That's likely rural reserve, depending on how the courts rule and various things, but I don't see that changing at all. An area that's not designated as Beaver Creek, that's where a subsequent push might occur. And I guarantee you, the pressure we're going to get from the community of Beaver Creek is going to be tremendous. They're a well-organized hamlet. They want to remain rural, and I really respect their overall desires, and they are rural. And so I think we have to look very, very carefully at these areas that are already in our comprehensive plan. And one of the things we need to focus on, it's one of the pressures, we've got this great mixed-use zoning along our main arteries. We don't have any developer that's coming forward to do anything about that. And somehow, we've got to incentivize that effort on those particular corridors. But I agree, I agree with Tony. I was here when, on the commission, when South End Development was first occurring, and I could see the mistakes that were made at that particular time. And it's coming back to bias at this juncture. But the thing is, it is a case of us acquiring experience and knowledge that is occurring here, and I think we're taking a real critical look at that. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing for now, but there will be a continuance, and the public hearing will continue at the next meeting as well. Is there anything else I need?
You should probably make a motion.
Yeah, can I hear a motion to continue?
So are we, I guess, just for clarity, what you're expecting to happen?
Yeah.
Because you're going to reopen the hearing.
Yeah.
You hear more public testimony on the 5th of March.
Is that what you'd like?
That's what I'm anticipating.
Okay, and so at this point, I don't have any questions that I'm hearing that you need us to come back and try and answer. I think we didn't capture any, at least, unless we missed it.
Can you maybe get me a hovercraft?
How about a tramp?
I'm not sure a hovercraft would actually help.
I'm sorry.
She wants to go out there and look around.
It's not going to get you up very high.
And so not to say that there won't be more that come in the next two weeks, or before our next meeting, but at this point, what we're going to do is bring back the implementing ordinance and then answer any questions that you have at the next meeting.
Do I have a motion to continuance?
Move to approve.
Move to approve from Commissioner Mann, seconded by Carol Paul.
To March 5.
That's to March 5. Will we continue?
Thank you.
Tom, could I see you a minute after the meeting, or are you going to take off right now?
Do you want to take a little bit of a break?
Do I want to take a little break? No, it does, you just go scan through here.
I can get through.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be too long.
Explainatory statement, library bond measure. It's, we don't have that much.
Resolution for the vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. So.
Push on.
We have here the explanatory statement for the resolution for library bond measure.
I'm sorry. Did I skip? We skipped 6B. Resolution for legal voters of Oregon City approving an annexation.
Oh, yes, excuse me, yes. We got the vote, we got a vote for an annexation that I think we saw it already. Is that right?
Correct. You've already approved the, thank you, Mayor. So you, at our last meeting, you approved annexation request 1301, and we're bringing back tonight the resolution referring to the legal voter of Oregon City, the question of approving an annexation of .5 acres at 19328 South Columbine Court. We would like to enter into the record a revised resolution number 14-03. Essentially, what we did was our ballot language did not match verbatim. We had to make a change because of the number count. So instead of saying shall point, shall 0.46 acres adjacent to South Columbine Court, we changed that to shall 0.46 acres along South Columbine Court. So that was the only change that we made in the resolution in order to meet the word count for the ballot. So with that change, we are requesting that the commission approve the ballot language for submittal annexation 13-01 to the legal voters of Oregon City and setting election date of May 20, 2014. Be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Are you coming in to speak to this one specifically?
I just wanted to comment that this is a sensible annexation, and I would encourage the commission to pass the ordinance. It came before the Hazel Grove Westling Farms Neighborhood Association, probably more than a year ago now. I'm surprised it's taken this long to get it to the ballot, but it makes a lot of sense. It's surrounded by city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name for the record, please.
For the record, I'm Tom O'Brien, and I'm a resident of Oregon City.
Thank you. Don't see anybody else wishing to speak? I hear a motion.
Do you have to close the public?
No, close the public hearing.
Okay. I will move to, for resolution 14-107, resolution number 1403. A resolution referring to the legal voters of Oregon City, the question of approving an annexation of 0.5 acres at 19328 South Columbine Court.
A motion moved by Kathy Roth, Commissioner Mann, seconded by myself. We have, we have a yes, and.
Do you not vote?
I thought I did.
It shows that he's.
It's okay.
Now he votes.
Okay. Oh, they're all, okay, they're all unanimous vote, okay. That was somebody else's vote that was up there. Very good. Then going into the next agenda item, which is a continuance of a zone chain request for properties located at 19882 White Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. On January 27, 2014, in following testimony in front of the Planning Commission during their public hearing, the applicant requested a continuance to the date certain of March 10, 2014, for the second Planning Commission public hearing on this issue. Since we needed to advertise well in advance of the public hearings, tonight was advertised for the first city commission public hearing on this issue. We are requesting that the city commission open the public hearing for planning file ZC 13-03, take public testimony from anyone interested in testifying tonight, and then continue the public hearing with the record open to the date certain of March 19, 2014. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
This requires us coming in, I'm sure, from the property owner. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Nope.
Open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, close the public hearing. I have a motion for a continuance to the date certain.
I move for a continuance of zone change request for properties located at 19882 White Lane.
To March 19.
March 19.
To March 19.
Motion by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Roth. Vote, please. Passage unanimously. Okay, with that, we're going to come into the explanatory, the explanatory statement for resolution 1402, the library bond measure.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Library Director Maureen Cole. She's here if we have any other questions about the statement. By virtue of the definition of your agenda item, I hope it's fairly explanatory. I do have one change that I just noted. I think I've looked at this thing so many times, it's like grading your own homework at some point, but the very next to the last, the last sentence in the last paragraph that begins with children's and teen areas, to be more grammatically correct, that should be areas for children and teens, comma. That raises your word count from 497 to 498. And those are the only changes we're recommending, and we'd like to recommend approval of the statement. It's been reviewed by our attorneys, and the language was submitted to Secretary of State's office in an FAQ and received safe harbor, so.
I hear a motion with the change.
Move to approve with the change.
Seconded.
And then moved and seconded. Commissioner Roth and Commissioner Smith, respectively, and the vote is unanimous. Okay. And with that, we're coming in.
Minutes.
7B.
Yeah, 7B, the minutes of the regular meeting, not part of a consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Okay. Move to approve. Okay, the vote is unanimous. And then we'll come down into communications. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I'm proud to announce that Eric Underwood is unveiling the OC Biz mobile app, and I think Eric wants to make a comment about that.
I'll make a comment. I wish I could make a presentation, but I can't hook up the iPhone to the screen, so. We did roll out the, what we call the OC Biz mobile app for iPhone and iPad and Android. What it basically is, is a directory for every Oregon City business. And we have it categorized into categories such as industrial, commercial, food and dining, services, and there's one other, and I don't have it up right now, but there's like four categories. And so it lists all the city businesses. It gives you direct contact information. You can go, if the business has a website, you can go directly to their website. You can press directions, and it'll take you to a map with pinpoints, and you can print out directions on how to get to that business, or you can call them directly from the website. So it's food and dining, industrial wholesale, services, and shopping. And so you click on one of those, and it comes right up, and it's just a great tool to find a business. And I've actually used this the past couple of days. I've had some inquiries whether or not the city kept a list with all the businesses' contact information. I'm like, well, we sure do, so just download this app, and they thought that was great.
I was going to ask a quick question. Everybody that's got a business license in Oregon City is on that list?
Right. If you have a current business license with Oregon City, you're on the list. If you haven't kept your business license current, you're not on there, so it's a little incentive to get a business license.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
And what's the mechanism for keeping this up to date?
We are working with consultants that are doing that. We're paying monthly on the retainer, and they're monitoring, and they're always improving the app, too.
Okay.
So we've got that, and you can go to the website and download a link, I believe it's there, under the economic development page. Or you can go to the App Store and just type in OC Biz, and you'll go right to it, and it's a free download. We also have some bonus features on this app. We have a little icon that's called Places, and it lists all of our parks, gives you directions in a map to every park in Oregon City. It also lists all of our publicly-owned facilities there. And there's also news, which is fed by the Twitter feeds and Facebook account that we have. And then we have a selection called City Hall, and it has every one of your pictures up on here. And a short, short little bio for each one of the commissioners. Same with the department heads. And so it gives direct information, so they can.
Can we get these airbrushed?
They have to be transparent, Your Honor.
I'll ask our consultants on this, yeah. And then we've got the departments on there. They can contact the departments directly. It's nice because it puts a face with the name, it makes it a little more personalized. And then there's some statistics about the city, number one selection, too, so.
It's great.
Hopefully, everyone will use it and enjoy it, and I think it's a useful tool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only other thing I have in my report tonight, I emailed you earlier a letter complimenting our staff from a gentleman in our community named. our staff from a gentleman in our community named William Becker, who whose father passed away recently, and William was just really taken with the services that he got from city staff in our cemetery. And it's not a facility we want to use very often, but when you have to use it, it's really nice if you get treated well, and we have a very small staff, so the fact that we had all that rain and the other events that you guys were coping with, Scott, you and your staff did a good job, and I just wanted to, I'm not gonna read his letter in total, I sent it to you, but we are grateful for his compliments and that's the extent of my report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. The first part of my report is not a report, it's something that I have done, but it's something that I wish to do. There's a bill being introduced in legislature that a draft currently is actually, looks like is requiring the cities to facilitate marijuana dispensaries. I want to contact our representatives to indicate this is not permitted on Arizona, but the city is not likely to change that issue, that we still have federal that prohibits the use of marijuana, and I wanted to convey that, and that I don't think we'd be, if that law goes forward, I don't think we'd be the only city that would oppose that law. And I don't think the state should put itself in a situation where it's going to actually have cities take the state to court and ultimately fail in the process. And so with your consent, I'm gonna go ahead and contact our representatives, probably Representative Kenimer too, because he's been very involved in this community. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Another thing is, we're beginning to fill up our advisory committees, and I want to announce the appointment of Damon Mayby to the South Fork Water Board Budget Committee and to the Tri-City Budget Committee. I don't believe I've made those announcements to those committees before, they're not city committees, but they are committees in which we have, in the case of South Fork, actually are owners of that and have advisory roles, and we actually have a budget committee representative to Tri-City. So I know Rocky Smith has seen Damon in budget committee meetings, he's a very thorough person, and so I appoint him to every budget committee that he's willing to serve on, and for some reason, he seems to like to serve on budget committees. Also announcing the memorial announcement of appointment of Eileen Sheridan to the Library Board to fill the county position, the announcement of the memorial assignments to Jerry Herman and Ginger Redlinger, who stuck around for that last announcement even though she was where it was going to occur, to our natural resource committee. So she stuck it out the whole time, I don't think to necessarily hear that particular announcement, however. The, we still have committee positions to fill, but we have actually, we actually have several of the boards are going to be meeting to do the interviews, I asked the board to do the interviews. We have them coming before us, the Park and Recreation Committee, the, oh, they're out of my head, but there's two others I believe that are coming. Library Board, and we did Natural Resources, that might be it. Well, the budget, you know, we have also the Budget Committee, in this case, the committees don't do the interview, myself and the Finance Committee Director meet together to interview for the Budget Committee and also for the Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust and the Metro Enhancement Grant Committees. So those are, those are coming up too. I think those are the only ones that we have positions not filled, but we have applicants and it may well fill all the positions. With that, that's the end of my comments, and I'm looking, I'll be looking over here in a moment to see who wants to speak next.
Not me.
Commissioner Smith.
Couple of meetings, we all attended South Fork meeting, and basically the main discussion item was our right of way fee that we have to pay this any, and discussed that and Wyatt was there to make a presentation, and I think that went fairly well. There was a little discussion with the board members from Westland on how that affects Westland and why are they, why is South Fork having to pay this fee, and so there was a discussion about that. I'm gonna do these really quick, I had several tourism meetings, the Heritage Coordinating Council met, and that's our, all of our heritage sites in Oregon City have representatives to that, and they put on the Spirits of Oregon City event in October typically every year, it was canceled this year because of the, or this past year because of the federal shutdown. Excuse me, the McLaughlin House was closed that day, and so it was one of the stops. So we had a discussion on whether or not we're gonna continue that next October, and we'll let people know about that, but we are also working on bringing back, Linda Orson talked tonight about kind of a refocus on bringing events back to the Carnegie area, and we as a heritage coordinating group have also been talking about that. The Carnegie Center has always been kind of a central point for living room for the city, and we see that with the coming library construction and the growth of the library, that that'll really solidify that again as a real center point of the city. So, and that, in addition to that, the renovation of the Erma Tinger House, so the Heritage Group is looking also to start centering events in this, in the park blocks essentially. And so we're talking about bringing back what we used to do, which was a harvest festival in the fall, so we're talking about bringing that back. A little bit more discussion about tourism in Oregon City, which also came up at the Oregon City Tourism Council meeting. We have gone through many different periods of different organizations kind of being the driver of tourism in Oregon City, whether it's the Chamber or other groups, that's gone back and forth. I've definitely felt in the last year especially, it's come up to some degree with our discussions as a commission, it's coming up almost at every meeting, from all kind of viewpoints of the city, on what are we gonna do about tourism and how are we going to bring that into play with Main Street and economic development, and so these discussions are happening. I know that the city manager is brainstorming ideas, I assume at some point those will come to the commission for more of a work session to really start talking about how we want to address that in the future, because there's a lot of people thinking about it. So I'm kind of just letting that discussion happen, and then as it happens, I'm sure it'll come to us. There's a lot of great ideas, of course, everyone says, well, we need to hire somebody. Well, you know, we've had that discussion before, you know, if the city hires someone, what does that mean, is it even possible if another organization does that, how does that work? And really, in the past, some of the real dilemmas in what direction Oregon City has been going in tourism is that there isn't really an umbrella person to coordinate all these groups, they're all equally working so hard that they can't themselves focus on just that one thing. So I think for really the first time in a long time, all of the groups seem to really be vocalizing the same message, and hopefully that at some point comes together. Let's see, what else? Back to the Oregon City Heritage Coordinating Council, they are brainstorming some ideas of a possible ambassador program, for lack of a better word, but we have various people that attend events in period costume, we've done, you know, the mayor's actually also been a part of events like that in Carnegie. We have a group of people that are very interested in living history that we'd like to see start attending events on a more regular basis to engage in discussions about the heritage of the city. It could be on various weekends, just wandering around Main Street in period costume to talk to people. And so with that idea, within the week of that meeting, had a meeting with Main Street, I had a meeting with Jonathan and Roger Nickerson, who's on the board of Main Street, discussing how to possibly add more of a heritage piece to the First City Festival that they're working on. And so there's a lot of things going on, but again, groups starting to come together that I think haven't necessarily come together in the past so well, and so I think we're really all making a real effort to try to get that going, and I think it's happening. So I'm excited about it.
Mr. Mumm.
Okay, thank you. I did want to comment on South Fork meeting. Thank you Wyatt for working with John Collins on the formula for the amount, and thank you David for meeting with John and Chris from Westland. So I did email all of the commissioners this letter regarding Transportation for America. I sent it to John Lewis and David Frazier, and so what happened at the C4 Subcommittee meeting is they just kind of presented this to us and asked us to kind of endorse it, and I said I couldn't endorse it without having everybody's buy-in. So that's why I'm here tonight to ask, do you want us to sign up and be a part of it and say yes, move forward with this? They're not sure where the money's gonna come from, they're not sure kind of what avenue they're gonna go down for funding. John, do you have anything to say? MAP 21 was...
If I remember right, this was the, a federal request for additional transportation funding, and I think it was an endorsement of that, there was some uncertainty about whether or not there was gonna be an increase in gas taxes, I may be getting issues confused.
No, that was correct.
Yeah, so a federal gas tax, and there was, yeah, a request that was, that I think we had, there was several electeds in the room that were concerned about the endorsement because they hadn't had an opportunity to discuss it, it sounded like our next meeting is now in April, so this, I think it was about a 17, it was similar to what we've heard from
Earl.
Earl Blumenauer's letter, which was a 17, endorsement of a 17 cent per gallon gas tax. And I think there was concern about whether that should be a federal, that kind of rate increase would be federally implemented or something else, everybody recognizes the transportation funding is limited, but, so that's, I, do you have, has everybody seen that documentation?
I did email it to everybody. It did mention about MAP 21, which President Obama signed into law.
Right, so MAP 21 is the current funding program, federal funding program that's funded, you know, any grant projects that we've gotten or not gotten, and that other agencies have gotten, but that's the main mechanism that's administered either through the state or through Metro. So it's the idea of re-upping that MAP 21 kind of a program, maybe they'll call it something different, but it's a similar federal funding mechanism, so.
And I don't think we would get any money, it just would be at the federal.
Well, we would, that money makes its way down through the states.
So it will give us...
Yeah, it would, yeah, that money in theory would get to us, but it also would go through, I mean, MAP 21 funds air travel and improvements to airports, rail in both freight and passenger rails, so it's a large federal program that, a portion of which comes to the local governments, usually through a grant administration, that either the state or Metro manages, but it's, our portion's usually pretty small compared to the overall.
Yeah, yeah.
17 cents a gallon would generate a fair amount of revenue, and I don't remember the dollar amount, but...
By the time we get it, it's half a cent.
Rather than take a formal motion, is your consensus that she, we should endorse it?
Do you guys have any questions?
My only question is, if we endorse it, will that give us the chance as a city to have more input?
You know, I didn't really get that from the meeting, did you, John?
No, I don't think that's, nobody was proposing that we would have any more input than we have now, the assumption is, is that, again, that those monies would be allocated through the states and that we would have shots at getting that money.
It'd be more of a chance for us to get a little bit more money, maybe.
Well, I mean, basically MAP 21 is it, as far as, you know, the federal transportation and its allocation of funding for transportation projects at these local levels is likely to dry up if something doesn't change.
Yes. So, I don't know.
Thank you, I think you have consensus.
David, did you have any questions?
No. I think the more funding we can have in the pool, the better, because we certainly
So if everybody's comfortable, then we should...
No, it's from everybody.
Okay. The other thing was March for Mills, don't forget, March for Mills, it's fundraiser for the senior center, for the Mills on Wheels, they reimburse drivers for their cash use,
And that's tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, at the Pioneer.
At the Pioneer Community Center. And I was gonna ask Carol how the fundraiser went.
Well, it went really good, Betty came down to help me, it was the benefit for Officer Lipke, we love OCPD Day on Valentine's Day, and when Betty came down and helped me, there was like absolutely nobody there during the day, but we had fun chatting. But in the, you did, that was you, good, but in the evening, we got very busy, so today I took a check for over $500 down to Clackamas Federal Credit Union in his name, and it was very rewarding on the heels of hearing that his baby daughter has been born. So that was wonderful, and we look forward to doing that event every year on Valentine's Day. So it was great.
Very cool. That's all I have.
Very good. Anything else with the good order? Hearing none.